Our planning and development code enforcement office, uh, consists of myself, I'm Ben Booton, Jeanette Sewell, uh, compliance officer, the newly, uh, created position, Lakeisha Frazier, administrative assistant. And, uh, here are a few things that we do in our department, uh, throughout the day. Uh, we do planning, we cover planning and zoning matters for the planning commission and the board of adjustments. We prepare packets for the planning commissioners and the board of adjustments for their meetings. We prepare resolutions and ordinances for the city council packets. Uh, we view building, building plans in, uh, in the preliminary stage. Uh, we're normally the first, we get the first call if, uh, a builder, developer, somebody wants to come in and, uh, set up a new site to, uh, uh, build a commercial building or a house. So they have to come to us and bring their plans and let's review and make sure they're correct. And, uh, everything's safe and by code before they can even, uh, turn any dirt. That's, that's the order that it's supposed to come in. And, uh, and so, and we also, we also inspect, uh, the, the, in each, every phase of the job, we do in fact inspections. Uh, if you, if you're building a new structure out of the ground, we go out and we look at your footings. We dig, we, uh, measure your footings. We make sure you got the right amount of rebar in the footing, right size. And then from that, uh, it's gonna be rough end plumbing inspections and a photo slab. And then, uh, from that, uh, do all your, uh, get the wood framed, get everything framed up. And we do a framing inspection and then a rough end electrical, a rough end plumbing. And then from that, everything goes to the final stage, uh, which is completion. Uh, we also do nuisance investigations. We identify the nuisance either by, uh, visual sight of cruising through the city or we, uh, take phone calls, uh, from citizens or council members or whomever. And so we go out and if we identify, we'll, uh, follow it through the abatement stage. And that's, a nuisance is considered anything that, that causes, uh, it could be odor, it could be, uh, I mean, it's visual, dilapidated structures, uh, inoperable vehicles, uh, anything that causes blight within the neighborhood. And th- those are some of the other, uh, things that we do. Uh, also, whatever other duties that we're assigned, we try to take them on and, uh, to try to help, uh, make our city great. Uh, we also do a lot of research. We have to dig county records. We, the system, turn the fry, county records, the county courthouse, here at the city. Uh, it's researched constantly. And, uh, and sometimes we'll trip over each other in the office trying to go different pile of candidates. But we issue building permits, moving permits, if you're moving a storage building. Uh, storage buildings have to have a moving permit for a certain size. Uh, sign permits, we issue sign permits, uh, public assembly permits for parades, uh, uh, public gathering. And, uh, we also, uh, assist customers with zoning in variance cases. Uh, that's, that's, uh, zoning in variance cases. Uh, somebody wanna, uh, rezone a piece of property, we'll go out and review it, look at it, see if it's gonna fit the neighborhood. And if it's fine with the neighborhood, we'll, uh, bring it before the, uh, board of adjustments and the council. And special use permits and, uh, and we also deal with subdivision regulations. We've, we've had so far this year, over fifteen structures removed. And you have to, sometimes you have to drive some of the side streets to see. Uh, luckily, it's been by the property owners themselves. That's what we want. We want the property owners themselves to remove their nuisance structure. If, uh, if a, if a house fire, there's a house fire, we don't need that problem. We don't need to be the one that have to remove the, the structure that you collected rent off of for twenty years, but you want us to remove it. And I'm gonna push. I mean, they'll call us, hey, we heard the city will tear the house down and we donate the land. No, we don't want, we don't want it like that. We want you to tear it down. We want you to be responsible because it's yo- it was, it's yours. And we wasn't in the loop nowhere when you was collecting it. So we gonna, we gonna try to push that on the citizens, the property owners. So council members, you may get some calls on that. But we have several other structures, several other structures to, to remove. Uh, we got structures with trees in them that's been there two, three years. We have structures that just has sit up and just the, the, uh, water damage caused dilapidation. And we're working dealings to make sure that we can contact these property owners before we take action on them. Uh, there's a bunch of, we have what we call activities that we, uh, report. Staff meeting every Monday morning. Since January, I mean, we've covered ninety different meetings. That's been recorded, uh, over a hundred and nineteen residential building permits, uh, two new residential construction permits, four special use permits, forty-seven commercial building permits, permits, uh, forty-one site surveys. Site survey can be from anything, going out, answering a call, a customer call and say, hey, uh, they're blowing their leaves on my yard. You know, they're cutting their grass or their, their leaves is blown on my property. So we, we cover any complaint, we try to make sure that we provide the service that the taxpayers are, are spending their money on. Uh, it, it might sound crazy, but we're gonna go out and we're gonna, we're gonna hear what you got. We're gonna hear your concern. Uh, we've had, we do a lot of, uh, notice through the mail of, of violations. We've had over, we've, we've sent out over three hundred and eighty-nine courtesy of, of, of notice of violations this year. Uh, we've had, we've had twenty-five notices of inoperable vehicles sitting in the front yard, sitting on the curb, uh, hindering a school bus from making a turn. And so we try to keep, we try to keep our streets, uh, clean and straight, wide open and, and for people, for bus traffic, su- school bus traffic. It's, it's, it's special. Uh, we've had thirty-three rough end, uh, uh, inspections. And if they're remodeling and they call and, and come in, hey, I'm ready for a plumbing inspection. I'm ready for electrical, rough end inspection. Hundred and twenty-two electrical inspections. And, uh, I, I can go on and go on, but I've, I've got some stuff coming up a little bit later on that we need to, we need to try to cover. But any, if, 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 call us, call me, it don't matter what time. Uh, the city provided me a phone. Uh, I know I won't get called two or three o'clock. Calls like I used to for other company I used to work with. But, uh, uh, we're here to serve the citizens of this town. We wanna help make our town viable. We want our town to look good. We want people to drive through our town and say, hey, this is a nice place. I'll be back.
Thank you. And, uh, on that note, I do wanna say that some of these reports are new for us to receive. However, it is important that you understand what, what we're doing in our day to day and why some of these new positions have been necessary for us to be able to continue to serve you. At this time, Mr. James Nixon from OPEC is going to make a report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Nixon. I am the treasurer for OPEC, Washtetl, Partnership for Economic Development. You have in front of you a, uh, small packet. Um, the, uh, first two pages would be my remarks that I'll stick to tonight. You'll have a visual that you'll wanna take out and we have in front of you with some buckets on it. I'll explain in a minute. And then the back, two pages that are stapled together, we won't talk about, but those are for you to have knowing the businesses that have been brought, uh, through OPEC to this area. And then there is some prospects that are being talked to that are on the back sheet. On behalf of OPEC board, I'd like to say thank you, mayor, for allowing me to speak tonight. I'd also like to thank the alderman for your dedication, sacrifice, and hard work. Representing OPEC tonight, I'm here to ask the city to add a line item to the city's twenty-twenty-two annual budget for general funds. And the amount that we're asking for in, is a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for OPEC and economic development in twenty-twenty-two. Now let me explain what we're, why we're asking for this. Some of you will remember, if you had this visual, some of you will remember the bucket presentation. In twenty-eighteen, OPEC formed a, uh, uh, we formed a committee to look at our future funding for OPEC. In doing so, we also wanted to look at, um, the economic funds that are on account with the city. If you look at this future funding two thousand and eighteen bucket principle that we have, OPEC controls two of these buckets. There are operational bucket and our incentive bucket. And the third bucket is the funds, again, that are on account with the city. And those funds that are on account with the city, most everybody knows, those are funds left over from an old, uh, economic and, uh, tax. And so those funds are precious and we try to hold on to them as long as we can. Uh, there's currently nothing going into those, but as we come before, uh, the city council times, we've had to ask for funds from there to cover operations and some incentives. And so in twenty-eighteen, when we first started talking about trying to slow the, uh, the draining of this economic fund on account with the city, uh, we reached out to, uh, Washtetl County and the Washtetl County Court and Court beginning in twenty-nineteen and have done it in twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. They have contributed a thous- a hundred thousand dollars every year to OPEC, uh, for our operations. That keeps us from going to this bucket. Uh, in twenty-nineteen, the city also, uh, took fifty thousand dollars out of the general fund, uh, to put in operations for OPEC. Again, those are positive steps forward in keeping us from draining the economic fund. So, um, in April of this year, during an OPEC executive meeting, the county judge and mayor began to discuss with us the possibility of how we could continue to fund OPEC and provide some sort of future funding. It was presented, uh, by the county judge and the mayor and them discussing that if each one, if the county would give a hundred and fifty-five thousand eh, out of their general funds and if the city would give a hundred and fifty-five thousand out of their general fund, that would be three hundred and ten thousand dollars. We need two hundred and ten thousand dollars for operations. That would leave a hundred thousand for incentives. Through that plan, we realized that we just created a future funding opportunity for OPEC and we also would stop having to drain this account and set it aside for those future growth and economic opportunities that we have that come up in our area. I will say that the, uh, uh, one of the reasons why we wanted to come before you now is because as we were talking about budget with OPEC, we found out last week that Washtetl County Court and Court has already set aside a line item for OPEC of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. They've already approved it and it's in their budget. But it is contingent upon the city also creating a line item and a budgeting item for OPEC for this hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. If we can get this hundred and fifty-five thousand from the county and a hundred and fifty-five thousand from the city, then it accomplishes the following. It creates a future financial funding stream for the local economic development. It presents, it prevents OPEC from needing to use financial dollars from the economic development bucket held by the city for annual operations. It also extends the useful life of OPEC. It extends the life of the financial economic dollars currently managed by the city, ensuring those dollars are available for future growth. And lastly, it demonstrates to our state partner, Arkansas Economic Development Commission, AEDC, that our local area has sustainable economic funding for future growth. So again, our proposal tonight is, is, as y'all look at your budget, to please consider adding a line item of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for OPEC. Questions?
So y'all, so y'all talked about this back in April?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I wouldn't have known nothing about it till you come up today. The mayor hadn't talked to us about it. I guess the county judge talked to the court and court about it back a while back. Is there any reason that we don't know anything about it till now? Did you know about it in April?
I, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna.
Do I know?
I'm not gonna delve into that. I, he's going with what you, are you finished?
I'm, I'm up for questions. If we're done, we're done.
Yes, I'm on.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we have the outside fire contract by Ron Nash. How about you?
It's not on my agenda.
Is it not on the agenda?
Uh, I think it's updated agenda on the desk.
I apologize. At least it's on the other agenda. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'll get an opportunity to speak back. We've only taken much time for this to long, you didn't realize that. Last time I was up here, I reminded everybody that December the first was a deadline to get the contracts in. Anybody apply for a contract, entities at Highland have been notified. I received no feedback whatsoever. I told you that then and it still is the same situation now. Just reminded everybody that the proposal we made to them said that the end of December, we would cover them through the end of December. Those have contracts. And after that, be up to city council. But if, if you haven't applied for a contract, there is no contract. And the contract has to come before the city council be approved if there was one. So that's where I know that we stand. I'm just bringing up that to y'all and laying on the table there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. For our old business, ordinance number thirteen twenty-one, which must be presented for its second, uh, reading. Who will? Is that?
Ordinance number thirteen, I'm sorry, fourteen twenty-one. Oh, no, thirteen twenty-one. I'm missing one. Sorry. Ordinance number thirteen twenty-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Camden, Arkansas, establishing a temporary interdepartmental district.
Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Leave it for the second read.
This is the second.
Second read. First favor, okay. Then now we're up to new business, ordinance number fourteen twenty-one. Who will introduce ordinance fourteen twenty-one?
I will.
Thank you, sir.
Ordinance number fourteen twenty-one, an ordinance repealing ordinance number thirty-seventeen, assessing a lien on certain property located at four thirty-two and four thirty-eight Union Street.
A motion?
Do you want a motion to stay ruled?
Yeah, I'd rather, but he asked for a motion.
Motion to sustain rule?
We don't have enough to pass it.
We don't have.
First read.
Resolution number sixty-eight twenty-one. Introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number sixty-eight twenty-one, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding a bid for oils and lubricants for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. We're up to resolution number sixty-nine twenty-one, which is also presented, uh, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number sixty-nine twenty-one, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding a bid for tires and tubes for the year twenty-twenty-two.
It's been moved and properly seconded. It's in the discussion. Those in favor use voting sign of aye. Those opposed use voting sign of, those, those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it in sixty-nine twenty-one. Resolution number seventy twenty-one is presented by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy twenty-one, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding a bid for batteries for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved and properly seconded. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it. Resolution number seventy-one twenty-one, which introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-one twenty-one, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, awarding a bid for towing both regular and large-sized city vehicles for the year twenty-twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
It's been moved and seconded. I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it. On resolution number seventy-two twenty-one presented by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-two twenty-one, a resolution of the city, hmm, sorry, the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, confirming the appointment of Connie Cox to the Camden Advertising and Promotion Commission.
Been moved and properly seconded. I'm ready for discussion. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Aye, yes.
I make a motion that we adjust our agenda here and move our two important items up to the top of all these dilapidated structures.
Aye, sir.
Uh, I'd like to move number sixteen, or number eighteen up to number seven spot and move number sixteen up to number eight spot.
So that, so you want resolution eighty-eight twenty-one to be in that, you know, the, uh,
Yes. Yeah.
And then, uh,
Eighty-five twenty-one be after that.
Budget being after that.
Motion. Seven, seven. Those in favor use voting sign of aye. Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it. Resolution number eighty-eight twenty-one. Eight, it's eighty-eight first, right?
Resolution number eighty-eight twenty-one, a resolution of the city council, the city of Camden, Arkansas, amending the budget. Oh, okay. I thought we were saving it for last. Um, let's see, amending the budget for twenty-twenty-one, appropriate funds for salaries of the fire department and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve, so we can discuss it.
Discuss it.
There's a motion and, five to second, I'm ready for discussion.
I'm, I'm curious as to what we missed in our budgeting thing or what's changed. If, I'm surprised that there weren't some other regular salary departments that would come up that would need adjusting if this one does.
Now, what, what we've got here is, there's two issues that cost this. These two are only two persons. One is administrative assistant and the other one is, one, the fireman is on the old pension system, which is kept out separate. Ends up, ended up in regular salaries with her since he's already gone through the drop and everything. The administrative assistant here several pay cycles ago took and acquired the job as interim assistant mayor. And thereby is drawing an interim salary for doing such. And that offset the pay there, plus the bonuses was an additional eighteen hundred dollars right there for just those regular salaries, not counting, just bumped my other up, twenty-five thousand two hundred on the regular fireman. The problem here, the reason this has come up is because the auditor, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Warner, the auditor has come and said we've just gone over a hundred percent to a hundred and three. And that's why she's saying that the city council is going to amend the budget.
Because of the adjustment.
And I guess what's gonna end up happening, I guess y'all have to come back in January and amend the budget for the bonuses, because I know the bonuses is gonna push the other salaries just over a hundred.
On, on the fire department or all the?
Probably everywhere if it's budgeted correctly. Should.
So the administrative assistant is on the fire department payroll, but they're really in the administrative.
She's in the interim.
Interim.
She's, she's in interim position.
Down here helping out on the interim.
Well, it looks like you should be in the fire department payroll if you're working in the home office.
Yeah, what budget is that coming out of?
The fire department. That's, that's the issue, I, I think, or that's what's running it over, I guess. It's our part of it why it's running over.
It is supposed to come out. Yes, sir.
Aren't we charging the fire department based on that upper salary?
Yes.
代入的 salary?
It's, it's coming out of our budget right now, yes.
Should we be doing that? We should be doing that.
It's supposed to come out of the administrative, right?
If you're doing administrative work.
Even though it's salary, it should come out of the government.
That's the job she has.
Is that something needs amended and moved? I mean.
She's, she's in the, she's in the interim assistant mayor position. It should be done out of the, uh, administrative, uh, uh, account.
I think we all have agreed that, but what's our legal approach on that?
So was her personnel form done for her?
Yes.
Yes.
Personnel action formed and then when she's transferred to that other position, yeah, her salary is gonna come out of administrative. So that fireman, fire department may not be over budgeted.
Yeah, another question.
Now, up until that point, I don't know if that's worth it.
What is he gonna do about it in the basic system?
She's still helping do that.
Oh, do that?
That, helping up there with some administrative work, yes, yes. And.
But she's, she, she's my employee here.
Is that gonna continue?
As of right now, she is.
She gotta get somebody.
Yeah, that'll be, but, but, but what I'm saying is, the assistant mayor position comes out of the administrative place. It does not come out of fire department or police department. It comes from this department. So that is what I'll say.
Well, that's, so if it's coming out of the administrative division, then the fire department should not be low. Now, if the chief's question or, or, there's more question about what does he do? If, if the assistant mayor position is the higher salary and she's actually doing the duties, I think she should be getting paid in administrative. Is she doing, uh, okay, part of the time down there, that, that's, that's the better way to do it. You couldn't have a revert. You couldn't say, you know, we're gonna keep you in the low paying position and come up, come up and have a high social. I guess the independent administrative personnel, uh, action form done, then that would make her interim. And I don't think they wanna fill that position, but it sounds like it's just interim to be assistant to the mayor. So leaving that, there's a, but, but salary just comes out of one. It won't come out of administrative, administrative.
And now you answered my third question. With, you know, I know we're looking to hire somebody, but do we eliminate her old job?
No.
And I don't think we should do that because really she benefited others.
If it's just interim, right. But that would be something for the chief and mayor to, right. The question is interim, that, you know, two weeks, is that two years? So, so, yeah, I'm sure the chief needs someone down there.
She can't be in one for two.
I, I would have the question of saying, how does the system handle that? The, the payroll system of saying, oh, I've got four hours here and four hours there, or, you know, that, that's split time at two different rates and, and all that. The, the payroll system of saying, oh, I've got four hours here and four hours there, or, you know, that, that split time at two different rates and, and all that.
I think it would just come out of the assistant mayor.
I'm wondering if we, if, if there's a way to.
I don't have a way to do this.
I'll let you, she had a discussion with the auditor, so I don't think.
So, the auditor said that y'all have to vote on her being in this position. She technically should be keeping up with her hours for both positions and getting paid her hours for interim assistant mayor, the higher rate for that. And when she's at the fire department, she should get her old pay rate for there. That's not possible in our system. You can't work two departments like that. You have to be one or the other. She's fire department right now, because that's what her personal action form said.
We may have to give her an alias.
Well, it's almost, are you, just a question, I guess we do that on the floor. If, am I allowed as a fire chief to give a go up here to street department and help y'all wash off down here to very funny, do some work with you? I'm at a higher pay, but am I able to go over into another department and help do some work? So she's down here, but she stops by there every now and then and processes some paperwork that may be coming down across her desk anyway. I, that's the person, I don't see that that's a conflict.
I don't. I mean, she just needs to probably be changed to the admin department instead of the fire department.
Now, but I would be concerned with the protection of the job.
Well, that position, that fire department's gonna stay there. It's got a position. It's just who's in it.
Right.
And how, I guess, but. Let, let me say.
I understand the law. I know we're government. And you, and you know what I do. I, I work two different plants. I, I work two different plants. But it doesn't conflict in government. Government don't have it.
It's really the computer system, I think, is the itch, that you're an employee and you've gotta be dedicated to one spot or the other. Let me just say, my motion's gonna be to let's, let's, let's drop this resolution for now. And, and, and say from the administrative, sign up whatever those papers to shift are from the fire department over to the admin and pay it that way until you make a change there. Be my suggestion. So let's vote this resolution down. And it may, likes to come back with bonuses that we still need to clear it up at the end of the year. We always have to come up in December, I mean, in January, and say, we agreed everything that the book showed in December.
And that would help lea-, um, alleviate this budget, right?
Well, uh, so, it's gonna change it a little bit, but not, not, I mean, we're, we're, it'll leave the, the fire department a little under budget, but, but that spot's been there and unfilled for a long time in the, at admin, so one part's a little behind and the other part's a little over.
Right now, we're gonna get to work now.
Those in favor use voting sign of aye?
Aye.
No, no, no. Listen, listen to, listen to what we just said.
Well, if you had a motion to table, if you had a motion to withdraw.
Killing it. I was just gonna vote to kill it.
That's why I took it. I didn't hear a motion to pass. I heard, I heard a motion to table.
I heard a motion to table.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. All right. Ayes have it on the votes table. All right, so now we are at number sixteen, resolution number eighty-five twenty-one, uh, presented by, introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number eighty-five twenty-one, a resolution for bottom four, adopting for the city of Camden, Arkansas, an annual operating budget for the twelve months beginning January first, twenty twenty-two, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, appropriating money for each and every item of expenditure during and provided for, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Is that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded. Ready for discussion?
Yes. Well, we have enough.
For resolution.
Is the urgency clause?
No.
Because it's not a separate clause.
But we can discuss it.
It's good, it's still past the resolution.
Okay.
Absolutely. Uh, and, and just, in my view, this, 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 what we're looking at in front of us just isn't quite ready for prime time. Uh, we have several budget meetings that we had, but almost all of it was spent going over the expense side of it. Little to none was spent going on the, the revenue side of the equation. And, and I, I, and looking through this this afternoon, trying to get ready for tonight, I, I picked up several things that I'm thinking, they're not right. In my view, someone, they can explain it to me and convince me, uh, if you, you'll go to this, uh, like I said, this page three of the chart that has the statement of estimated revenues. Uh, ad valorem property taxes is, it, it's showing here, I estimated twenty, twenty-one revenues, uh, at four hundred and forty-two thousand. Well, our year-to-date November property taxes are only three hundred and twenty. So I don't know why it's put in there that we expect four hundred and forty-two for the rest of this, for the total of twenty twenty, and we're gonna get that much more for twenty twenty-two. That, that, there may be a reason, but someone needs to explain that to me. The same thing for the ad valorem taxes. And we've got the same thing right under it for the housing authority in lieu, lieu of taxes, that six thousand dollars. If we didn't get it this year, why are we gonna get it next year? Uh, the other thing in there, it's showing, uh, down at the bottom of that forty-one six hundred account, the A and P tax. They're supposed to transfer to general fund a hundred thousand dollars. That was in our budget for twenty twenty-one. We haven't received it. It's showing that we're gonna get it for the year, but we haven't yet. Uh, unless somebody does something, we're not gonna get it. And, uh, so maybe we'll get it for twenty twenty-two, I don't know. But that's a hundred thousand dollars of revenue that's put in here like we're gonna get it, that, uh, is a, it, it wasn't done for twenty twenty-one yet. It may happen in December. Flip over to the page four of this statement of estimated revenues. And you've got this transfer from the airport of three hundred thousand that was budgeted for twenty twenty-one, shows we got it for twenty twenty-one, and we're gonna get it again for twenty twenty-two. Uh-uh, all that was cleared out. It's been done. So, you know, there's three hundred thousand that was in our numbers, is estimated that we're gonna get, but, but isn't there. Uh, let me see, if, if you go back over, this is getting on back into the, uh, non-departmental. It's page fifty-five of the printout. Non-departmental. There again, it's got this transfer to the airport commission of three hundred thousand that isn't there. That's, that's done. It should be zeroed out. Uh, transfer to the street fund. It's back in there for a hundred thousand dollars. I don't think we've settled, we didn't do it for twenty twenty-one. It's acting, it's showing here that we did, or, or will, did or will, if it hadn't been done, and transferred to solid waste a hundred thousand dollars. Those are zeros for twenty twenty-one, and we hadn't voted on it for twenty twenty-two. So there's just a number of things like that. I'm saying, hey, we need to put this thing on a back burner and have a meeting to, to, to try to relook at, uh, a lot of these numbers. Uh, uh, one other item here, well, there again, it goes back to the, uh, the solid waste, uh, account on page seventy-six. It's showing that, uh, for some reason, the, uh, it's account number forty-six five hundred, which is the sales tax share that we do with the county, the sixty percent, forty percent. It's showing that we're at, we're gonna get nine hundred and six thousand dollars. That's the estimated projection for the year end of twenty twenty-one, okay? But the eleven-month total is already nine hundred and thirty-one thousand for this year, and we'll probably get another eighty thousand in September. Excuse me, December, in December. So we're gonna be right at a million dollars there, not nine hundred and six. And the estimated revenue for twenty twenty-two is in there at eight hundred and twenty-two, which was the same as the twenty twenty-one budget. It's just, there's too many things that don't add up to me.
It sound like, well, we need to table it and, and, and have another workshop.
We need to, 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 I hash out, there may be things that I missed. Those were just the ones that I was picking up and I'm saying, either I'm, I'm missing something or these things didn't, like I said, we really never run over the revenue items that much. And, uh, there, anyways, so I'm just missing a lot. I would like to be able to fund that O P E D request that we have of, of putting some money in out of the general fund, but I'm not sure the general fund's gonna have a, a surplus to do that with. I thought it was gonna to. But as I got to looking at this, I'm not sure it's really gonna have a spendable surplus.
I'd like to find the proof too, but we gotta make sure we got all of that covered.
All right, so what's the motion?
Well, my motion would be to table this for tonight and, and let's plan a, 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 another workshop would be my.
Motion to table, is there a second? Move properly seconded. Is there, uh, any more discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye. Ayes, those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on table, uh, resolution number eighty-five twenty-one. We go back then to, we can't do any emergency, we can't do.
Well, we can do the resolutions on all those, uh, kind of nations.
Just not emergency.
I don't think either have.
They don't? Okay. Well, we have resolution numbers, are we at seventy-two twenty-one?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three twenty-one, uh, which is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-three twenty-one, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structures located at six twenty-four Kimark Street, a public nuisance and to order the removal of saying.
Take over, Mark. I'm worn out.
Move. Properly seconded. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of name. Ayes have it on resolution seventy-three twenty-one. Resolution number seventy-four twenty-one is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-four twenty-one, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structures located at four oh six Myrtle Street, a public nuisance and to order removal of the same.
Motion to approve.
Second.
And seconded. Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. We're now at resolution number seventy-six twenty-one introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-six twenty-one, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structures located at one thirty-four Clifton Street, a public nuisance and to order removal of the same.
That's make the motion to approve. Motion to approve. Properly seconded. Any discussion on resolution number seventy-six twenty-one? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number seventy-six twenty-one. We have resolution number seventy-eight twenty-one introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-eight twenty-one, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structure located at two thirty-two A G, a public nuisance and to order removal of the same.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of nay. Ayes have it on resolution number seventy-eight twenty-one. Resolution number seventy-nine twenty-one is introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number seventy-nine twenty-one, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structure located at four oh seven Olive Street, a public nuisance and to order the removal of saying.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of name. Resolution number, uh, seventy-nine twenty-one passes. Resolution number eighty-one twenty-one introduced by the mayor.
Resolution number eighty-one twenty-one, a resolution to declare the dilapidated structure located at five oh five Maple, a public nuisance and to order removal of saying.
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Move and seconded. Any discussion on resolution eighty-one twenty-one? Those in favor use voting sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed use voting sign of name. Ayes have it on eighty-one twenty-one. Resolution number eighty-two twenty-one introduced by the mayor.